For Thursday, April 26, 2018, will please come to order. And I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Calling the roll, Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones is absent at the moment. Ms. Brown. Ms. Brown is absent at the moment. Mr. Hauser. Mr. Hauser is absent at the moment. Ms. Simon. Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Tuma?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Schron?
Here.
Council President Brady?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you very much. And do we have anybody signed in for public comment?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Liu.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, this is the first time I have come to, I mean, basically this year, this is the second meeting I have seen as a work session. I know lots of things are going on with all of us in this county. And I really appreciate in the previous session, our council member, Simon, council member Brown, asked a very good question, and I really love Mr. Gallagher's comments. And I did use homeless shelter problems and the DCF as problems to reflect the urgency and importance the current county government, especially the county council, have been doing for all of us. You guys have got elected to represent people, and the executive will be elected to do the administration work. I know right now he's not here. This is very important because the government should be for the people, by the people, and of course, it's based on what people needs and what people needs to go on collectively. And for all the problems accumulated from the past, dealership, of course, is one you may consider first world problems, but it's real. Just as the story I told you guys, which is the truth from that particular worker at the shelter. Her trauma, this particular one, was about 30 years ago it happened. However, all these things are still happening. Maybe lots of people are not aware of it. And that's the reason why we have a problem after problem, especially on all these health and human services, because public policies were made from long time ago by the people who didn't really need a service. They did not have a very good understanding of the real issues on people. Now, it falls on your shoulders. That's why I said, because I have experienced that you guys are the heroes without masks, without capes, because you have the power. You are elected by people. Same thing with the dealership problem here. That's why I'm here again to actually to thank you to make the shelter transition happens. We will have a new service provided in to see if there's more help they can bring in to the shelter from May 1st. The other thing is, I realize on the 10th of April, there was an ordinance passed saying we would change the rules about this public commons. Since then, I have been mocked that the rules got changed because of me. My name should be on that rule, just like, you know, Miranda rights or those stuff. I believe it has nothing to do with me, but I really wish this will work out well for everybody. So my suggestion is, since some of the things for agenda and some things unrelated to agenda, both are important, you want to hear, is that possible you guys can change the rules a little bit to four minutes? So in that case, if somebody having issues on both ends, they can still express themselves for you to know the problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Has anybody else signed in?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. We're now going to move to our main event of the day, which is the presentation on the ERP system from our county consultant, Mr. Zig Burzens. And I would say first of all, before we start, that I had the opportunity, the day before yesterday, to attend the pit crew meeting, which involved all the people that are directly involved in implementing the ERP system. And I have to say that I came away from that meeting encouraged. They made a very good presentation in which they talked about how first you get the, what they called the vanilla version of the various systems from the, from our vendor. And then, we have a very extensive process that has about six main steps, and each step has several subsets, and they went through it in considerable detail about the process for taking this, this plain vanilla system and calibrating it and configuring it and making it so that it aligns to what we need to do with our system here in Cuyahoga County. And that's, that's an important part of the implementation process, and I came away with the feeling that they, they had a good handle on that. So that was encouraging. But as, as we will see when we hear Zig's report, that there are many other aspects to this implementation process, some of which are in decent shape and some of which are not. And so Zig is going to flesh that out for us. And it's, it's an extensive presentation, so I'm not going to ask everybody to hold all their questions till the end. We'll have, we'll have some breaks from time to time where we'll see if there's questions and kind of do it in segments. And one other thing, I would note that, that Councilwoman Brown has joined the meeting. Thank you very much. So with that, I will turn it over to Zig to start working us through the April 2018 report. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So this is the first quarterly representation that we will be conducting over the coming year. It will be of the April report, though. It's not really an accumulation of the past quarter. I try to keep things as current as I possibly can, and I think it's important that you ask the same of the team when they provide you with their April report. It should be fairly current rather than a month old. So that should, that should be kind of a key thing that you, I think you should be looking for. So this report, the only difference between this one and the March report is that I didn't include the overall summary commentary in the very beginning, sort of an executive summary that not being necessary because we're actually walking through the report at this point. I wanted to show you then, you know, basically the agenda and what we're going to be talking about. Of course, we're going to start with the good news. I think it's important to talk about good news. You know, this is a very large, very complex implementation. And as such, you know, unfortunately, you know, people don't like to watch sausage being made, and, you know, there's going to be a lot of that, I think, over the next few months as we delve into, you know, some of the details. So it can, can start looking a little negative at times. The other thing I'd like to mention to you is that there's some detailed examples that I have provided that are in the appendices, and we're not going to go over those. They're there for your reference, and you can look at them at another time. The project, as I've said, is very, it's large, it's complex, there are a lot of components. Well, that means that there's also not only a lot of components to the project, to the system, but there are a lot of components to the project itself. And those have to be managed, and that's where we need to be focusing some of our attention as we go through this. So given, given that list, let's talk about the good news. The important piece of information here is that the team has actually started and has actually rolled out some components of the project, and they've done it successfully. I think that's very good news. I think that, you know, one of the reasons it is successful is that the area that they've rolled it out to doesn't have a lot of automation to begin with. So it's a much easier transition of something new, and that is working. In other words, the dispatchers, the print shop, these are the areas that are actually using work orders now, and the feedback has been very positive. And I think, as Mr. Miller just mentioned, you know, it's being promulgated out, and people are hearing about it, and that's a good thing. And there will be five more, five more rollouts as part of the work order or enterprise asset management component of the system over the next two months. I envision that they will, they will continue to be successful as they roll them out. So the other thing I think it's important about this rollout is the, the system of record for the county for infrastructure assets is your geographical information system, GIS. That system has been connected to the work order system, and that is appropriate, that's good, that's positive. So now, when, when, when the Public Works is actually conducting projects and working on things and entering data into their work orders, that information is being, is being passed back and forth with the, the asset record, master record for the county, which is a good thing. That will continue to then be in place as the other five rollouts for enterprise asset management go on over the next two months. Okay? Now, if I, if I use some acronyms, please stop me if you need to have them straightened out. I do know that the, the team gave you a list, a fairly long list of all the acronyms. Those are going to be involved no matter what you do in terms of how large the project is and so forth. Some additional good news, the, the team has contracted with a third-party assurance vendor. It is RSM McGlady. They're a professional outfit, they're solid, they know their business, so I think that's, that's a good thing. And they will be focusing mainly on assessing the readiness of the various components of the project as they get to that spot in the plan, the readiness of the county to, to do the testing, to do the training, to do the actual operational rollout. So those, those are very positive things, and we'll see how that goes. And the key thing I think here is to make sure that their efforts are tied to the rollouts. I do want to mention that I'm using the term rollout. In the, in the early stages, when you received reports from the team, they talked about go-live when you turn the system on, but there are, there were only eight go-lives that were identified for you. And that really wasn't accurate. There are now 20 go-lives. I call them rollouts, okay? So there are actually eight rollouts, various components for enterprise asset management. The other thing I thought was important is that the global HCM, Human Capital Management Module, if you will, or subsystem, actually includes payroll. But when you look at the plan, they're at separate times. And that's important, you know, because open enrollment is going to be a key go-live position, a key rollout. It's going to affect all the employees. And I can, I look at that as being the ultimate validators of the system. So you'll find out very quickly if open enrollment works or doesn't work. Same thing with payroll, you know. So payroll is, and that's at a different timeframe of when that turns on. Same thing with time clocks. I mean, you're talking about, you know, for payroll, it's what, 8,000 people approximately? They're going to look at those paychecks, right? They're the ultimate validator. So it's important that this, this third-party assessor looks at all the rollouts. I think, you know, we need to also mention that, you know, the, the team is getting, going to get a contract project manager. So you, you would hopefully see that individual in the near future, you know, who would, who would then be the professional that would, that would, you know, take, take over planning and managing and organizing the project, which I think is critical. I do also think that that individual should, should basically report to the business side of the house as opposed to the technical side of the house. Okay? And that's because ERP is so all-encompassing and crosses so many boundaries, it's important to continually look at this thing from the perspective of the operation and what the county is all about as opposed to the technology. The last item here is that, again, good news, the county executive has asked the chief of staff to, to be a member of the executive steering committee, and he has, I've had several meetings with him already, he has gotten involved, and that's a good thing. As you know, I thought that the team should be providing you monthly reports. That's happened. You got your first monthly report. I think that's excellent, and that's good news. And, you know, I think you should continue to get those monthly reports, and then you will see that, I'm going to be talking about the trend of those monthly reports, because I think one of the key things about managing this project is to maintain pace. And the only way you can maintain pace is to get a feel for the trend of how things are moving in the project. We've already talked about the, the rollout of the enterprise asset management system. I think the key message here is, is that that is, there's a lot of things that are going on right now that are being questioned with regard to scope and schedule and so forth. The enterprise asset management component is relatively independent of the rest of the system. And so I, it's, I'm very comfortable and positive about the fact that it can continue moving forward, and more than likely over the next, after the next two months, you're going to have all of that in, and it's going to be out there operational. And I think that's, that's fine. The other major components of the system have much more reliance on each other. So if you start thinking about any kind of major change, then you need to make sure that you keep the sequence relatively correct. So you, basically, HR, human resources, payroll should follow fiscal. You need to have your general ledger and your account code structure in place to make all that work. And so if somebody starts talking about, well, we've got to move fiscal to 2019, you're pushing HR a little further out, too. And as soon as you do that, you start getting into some issues with the current system and open enrollment, so a lot of details there. I just wanted to make sure you're aware that at least this piece is probably going to go along just fine. So let's talk a little bit about the solution itself. Just wanted to give you some perspective, and I tried to put it in a graphic. And the purpose of the graphic is to, is to make sure we understand that this is complex, that there are a lot of parts. There are a lot of parts, okay? And that is, makes things very, very difficult in terms of getting it done. The number of lines of code, the number of programs, I mean, the number of reports, the number of interfaces, the numbers start getting mind, they start becoming mind-boggling. I do want to highlight for you, when people talk about the financial system, that's the darker blue. The lighter blue are the components of the financial system. So it's not just the general ledger. You've got accounts payable, you've got accounts receivable, you've got grants management, you've got project accounting. I mean, it goes on, okay? Same thing with human resources, the work, you know, you'll hear workforce management is one of the components. Well, that's where you capture time, and that's part of it, okay? Notice that I have, I have split payroll out, and I split payroll out specifically because the ultimate validator on payroll are those people getting paychecks. And its timing and the day, and the target date is different from HR. It's later in the year. HR is closer to, guess what, when open enrollment is due, okay? The other thing I'd like to show you is that, you know, you'll see enterprise asset management down there, and you'll notice that I've kind of created a crosshatch there of, of various different portions. And that's to show you that as we go on a monthly basis, you're going to see those red and white stripes in there as pieces of that actually go, are rolled out. So it just gives you a feel. So when, when payroll gets rolled out, you'll see the red and white crosshatch on the payroll system. Does that make sense? Okay? Couple of things, the purple down there in the lower left, that's the customer relationship management system. That was actually purchased from Infory, your vendor, but was split off and is not part of the ERP project. It's being, it's being treated as a pilot, so I just wanted you to be aware, but that's in there, and some money was spent on that, okay? Not a lot, but it's out there. Okay, down at the bottom, there are two sort of tan-colored lines. One of them talks about the legacy data repository. That's where all the history is going to reside. That's external to the ERP project. That's being done by the IT personnel, and that's really not part of the project, okay? So it's external. There, there are going to be linkages between ERP and that data repository. Same thing with the document management. You've all heard about OnBase. You're familiar with that. Again, it's not part of ERP. It's external, okay? It's what the county has been using for a long time for its purposes, but it's really not part of ERP. What's going to happen is that information will be linked and passed to that subsystem. Does that make sense? Okay. And lastly, over here in the lower right, you'll see another green box, and the reason it's green is because it's outside of scope, but it's very important to, to the system. So if I change this and then take a look at the next page, you'll see this big red arrow that says revenue. When you hear HERA system and that project of putting in the HERA system, separate, not part of ERP, but it feeds the revenue, okay? And that feed has to get to the new financial system, and that's an important interface, clearly. Okay? The other thing I wanted to remind everybody about in the upper left-hand corner is the agenda management system, which we've all heard about. That agenda management system is fed documents by OnBase, okay? But it also is external to the ERP project, all right? It's not really part of it. And then I've got a little, little warning arrow down at the lower, lower left, and that is, that might be the big alligator waiting to chomp on everybody. And that's this whole business of legacy information, history information, where it resides, how are you going to get that information there? The county is changing its account code structure, okay? Well, that means that everything in the, the new system will be structured and organized from a numbers perspective differently from their history. Got to, got to be able to crosswalk that, and that creates complexity. I just need to pay attention to it. I'm just saying, it's sitting out there, got to be, got to be careful. This is a list of the rollouts. Just want to make sure everybody's aware that there are 20 rollouts. The other thing I tried to do is I, is I sequence them by their target date. Now, I've shown you two columns, there are two dates, and that's because the dates have a tendency to change. We need to recognize that they're changing, okay? They're not changing a lot, but they are changing. So the darker green or gold color indicates the changed position of that target date. The rest of them are all out there according to when they occur. So you'll see in the first couple of months, that work order information, the enterprise asset management system, that's what's going to be going on. I'm very comfortable that that's going to be going on quite well. But then you see, oh, we, we have a, we have an opening, the month of August, nothing's rolling out. Then all of a sudden, we get to September, and we have seven, are you ready for that? Seven rollouts in one month, okay? This is the, this is the first time anybody's seen it this way, right? Because everybody tends to put these rollouts in their numerical order, which means that the dates don't match up according to when they're going to occur. I think they'd be, ought to be when they occur, okay? Now, I need to manage this. Same thing in December. Of all months, what are we doing with seven rollouts in December? I mean, that's the month when you have two less weeks of available productive time, right? I mean, people have a tendency to just worry about the holidays, so you're really cutting into the available time in December. There's seven of those rollouts. As soon as that happens, and you've got seven of those rollouts, and you've got them in September and December, that means that you're creating a significant load on the people who are working on most of the rollouts. So that means that you've got your IT people are going to get, are going to get buried, and probably a good portion of your fiscal staff are going to get buried, okay? Yes, HR's in there as well, no argument there, but I'm just saying, that's a lot of rollouts, okay? The other thing that I've tried to highlight here, and this is from a timing perspective to say, okay, open enrollment, September, your validators are all going to be waiting. It's all about keying into a screen and saying, okay, I need to set my benefits, I need to change them, whatever the case may be, that's, that's crucial. Same thing, the first time, you know, when you put in payroll, you're putting in new time clocks, you know? And the last client I was on, that created a huge problem because the rounding rules and the time clocks were changed. And when the rounding rules and the time clocks were changed, the union paychecks changed. That was a serious problem. And it wasn't tested. I, I couldn't, I could not persuade them to test, what I refer to as womb to tomb. You've got to test from the time clock to the check. Got, you have to. They didn't, okay? So, serious problem. So those are the three very large ones. The other thing I, you know, I highlight in here because it's been buried, the fiscal team has sort of buried the budgeting design work and the, and the work associated with the budgeting subsystem. Well, budgeting has a particular cycle that has to be met in terms of preparing budget, and counties are run by budget. Seems to me like it ought to be segregated out, people ought to pay attention to it. I think that the team is very close now to making a decision, haven't done it yet, but they're close, that maybe they won't even use the new system for budget preparation, even if it does turn on in September, okay? So that's, that's the kind of stuff that's going on. So I've already said, I think, everything on this planned rollout page, I'm going to go on.
Okay. I think that this is a good time to, to take a quick break and, and check with my colleagues and see if anybody has any questions. Councilman Schron.
Thanks, Chairman. So you were aware that we had presentation this week on Public Works announcing that they had launched a successful improvement of 20 percent improvement on work orders going from 2,500 to 3,000. All I'm asking is, does your research quantify that improvement?
No. No, I mean, I'm, I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised. I mean, that, that can certainly be the case, but I have not personally examined that. I think, as I mentioned earlier, since there is very little automation in that area, achieving those kind of, those kind of results relatively quickly is fairly, fairly easy to do.
Okay. Because you are, as I see it, the council's eyes and ears, and that was the very first time that we've heard any quantification of improvement, would you be so kind as to at least verify through your record-keeping and checking that, that's taking place? Because we're going to, I hope, start to hear other progress, and I would love to make sure that we, this body can rely on it when we're being told that out there. So with that, you indicated that the ultimate validator is, of the paycheck is the individual, and I think you made that comment a couple of times. It's my understanding, just having dealt with payroll, that the validation takes place only if the paycheck is underperforming.
That's probably true.
I have yet to find a overt validator if it's overtime being paid incorrectly, or if it is payroll, just even based on some of your rounding errors you were talking about that were, that, that are potentially suspect. How are we going to protect ourselves, we the taxpayers, on that portion of the validation? I have no doubt that the individual is going to tell us if they're under, if we're underperforming. At least I hope they would do that. But it's the overpaid, as we already know, that we had a whole 1.7 million dollar overtime issue that cropped up. I would like to know that that validation is taking place, and we're looking at it from, from the taxpayer's standpoint.
Certainly. And, and I can only say that, to the best of my knowledge, that there is included in the plan of conducting not only integration testing, but also user acceptance testing, which are two stages of testing, presumably, and I have not seen this yet, but presumably one of those two, probably user acceptance testing, will include some, some parallels. And that there's no- And that there's no question there needs to be staff assigned that are going to literally be reviewing those parallels, validating those parallels, checking to make sure that they actually are what they're supposed to be. So that's where you catch that, the overpayment kind of situation, yeah.
And sometimes you actually would actually artificially put that in there just to see whether or not the validation takes place that people will tell you as a way to check and cross-check.
Certainly.
So I would encourage us to look for the validation, not on the underpayment side, because I think that'll come out. And very loudly, we'll hear that side.
And if I may, I think the other thing that will help the team is the fact that you've got RSM McGlady in there that's doing that testing, readiness testing.
And I have a lot of confidence that they're going to be able to push back on that. I think we've got to, that was a real improvement. The chief of staff indicated on his slides, the number one and number two points on his slides were, on the very beginning on his goals, was an improvement in efficiency and a cost reduction. And I think these are terrific. Should we have had those two items filled in at this point already on this process? Before you start spending the taxpayers $25 million?
Normally, normally, when one or an organization heads down the path of selecting and implementing an enterprise-wide automated solution, normally when that's done, the initial process of deciding that's what we want to do, okay, usually includes a business case. Usually. Now, I don't think there's been one here, but usually there's a business case. And that business case says, this is how long it's going to take, round numbers. This is how much it's going to cost, round numbers. This is the value or the benefit return, whatever term you wish to use. We fully expect this particular solution to provide for us. That usually is done because it helps you make your decision. I don't know if it was ever there. Certainly, there's an awful lot of discussion, and I've seen some of the earlier quarterly reports where, you know, folks, especially Public Works, you know, talked about some of the ways that they're going to achieve benefits. I certainly think that the entire group, the entire team, recognizes that the council is anxious to learn about those and to know what they are, because you have to figure out what impact this has on budget two, three, four years from now. Of course, that needs to happen. I think they're doing it. I think they're moving forward at a turtle's pace.
Okay. And I realize that ships probably already sailed and should have been two years ago when we were asking these questions. But we'll disregard that part. When do you think we will actually get that information based on the questions we keep asking at this point in time? If it's going at a turtle's pace?
Two things.
If ever, I guess.
Two things. I have urged the team to include some initial thoughts and some initial numbers in their April report, which you should get next week.
Okay, good.
Because I think that there are some benefits that are very clear, at least that they have suggested or have mentioned. They have then indicated that the May report should be your result. In other words, what are the total projected benefits from the system? And certainly, when does it pay for itself? Okay? And when do you start seeing additional returns?
Would McGattery be able to give any kind of range historically that a project of this nature would have yielded as far as alignment and cost savings for a group of this nature?
I think there are a variety of different potential benefits that organizations have addressed. Many of them are tied to going from non-automation to automation. So Public Works, I think, is going to be fairly straightforward. Okay? The hardest place to start getting benefits are accounting systems. You know, I mean, but again, payroll, if you, you know, you can certainly start seeing, you know, with good timekeeping and all that, theoretically, you start getting some improvements in overall effectiveness. People can be moved to other places and do other work. And as you add work, you know, those kinds of things can happen. The, I think the financial people are expecting a lot of reductions in paperwork. So you're going to get that kind of thing. And certainly, you've got the potential for, gee, we think we're going to need this many people additionally in five years from now, and we just simply don't need to get them five years from now. So I think you're going to see some of that stuff. What that number comes out to, that's a hard one. I don't know if I'm prepared to even come up with something at this stage.
Okay. I just have two more. You had a graphics showing the alignment of the different flows of how the project breaks down.
Sure.
Your chart.
You're talking about this one?
Next one over. The next one.
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
This is what you believe it looks like?
I have reviewed this with the team. I mean, so.
If the team, does the team have a chart that looks exactly like this one?
No, no. They don't do that sort of thing.
I'm sorry, but I don't share your humor.
I tend to be graphical, and I tend to think that things ought to be able to fit on an eight and a half, 11 sheet of paper. And so, yeah, I created it because I needed to understand it. And this was the way I was able to do that. I have reviewed it with the team members, and I have asked, is this accurate? Is this reflective of the system? And the answer is yes. Now, the thing that I have not done, okay, which, again, technology people have a tendency to get very detailed. Okay? So the first thing they're going to say, well, it doesn't have any arrows on it. But if you put all the arrows on this thing, it gets to be like a spider web, and you can't even see what's there, which is why I use this big arrow at the top. It says, general information flow is from left to right.
These are the functional buckets. Would they agree with your chart?
Yes.
And would they, okay, all right. That's why I'd like to make sure that they are aligned. The team's alignment is very much aligned with what we are seeing, because you are our advisor out here.
You bet. I specifically made sure I reviewed it with them.
And if they objected to it, they should have spoken up, I would hope.
Well, they had some corrections in my first draft.
Yeah, that's fine. That's what communication is all about.
Yeah.
And then the other one was the slide you just, as far as the timeline with the rollout. Okay, you gave, this is your rollout or this is their rollout?
This is from their master plan.
Right, okay.
Okay? So that's why it's, I mean, I have not created anything in here other than the representation.
Yes. So this is the best-case example. There's no way this is going to go faster than this rollout, even based on what they've said to you. These rollouts are not going to get moved. The December one's not going to get moved into October and November. So this is the best-case scenario.
Yeah, as of this point in time, yes. I mean, if anything, something's going to get pushed, something else is going to get pushed to 2019.
That's the second question. What is, in your mind, what is the worst case that we should, the 11 of us should be looking for?
The absolute worst case?
Yes, of these same rollout periods of time.
The absolute worst case would be that you come to the conclusion that you can't roll out finance until the end of the year instead of 9/3, 12/31, or 1/1, whatever the case may be. And as soon as you do that, the right answer is really that then you need to have HR go out into 2019. And of course, that immediately creates an issue with HR, because then they can't do open enrollment with the new system.
If you move the September, what, seven rollouts, move it all to the right, everything to the right starts to move dramatically. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Have you ever sketched that out for us?
No.
Okay. I think it would be beneficial to us to know best case, worst case, and most likely, which is what traditionally is the analysis. And this is the best case we're looking at right here.
At this point, yes, yes.
Yeah.
And notice, the team has actually moved some of these things closer. They've moved some of these things in. I mean, if you look at those dates, and that was from March to April, those dates in there are March dates and April dates in their master plan.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You bet. Shall I go on? No, I'm sorry.
We have a little bit more, and Ms. Conwell is next.
To the chair, Zig. You concerned me when you talked about the chart with the seven more in December, the rollouts, the burden on the department staff. Have you shared your concerns about the seven rollouts in December? And what was their response?
I have certainly alluded to it and have mentioned it, but I have not made an issue out of it. Okay? So, I mean, you know, they're managing this thing. They're scheduling this thing. And I think, again, I don't think people are viewing it this way. And this will be the first time that they've actually viewed it this way.
So since you think that there's a burden on department staff, IT, fiscal, and HR, is this a section that you think the additional employees will be used?
Absolutely. And as we've mentioned before, there's a budget in this project budget for backfill. That's intended to provide resources and at best to provide them on a contract basis, right? So you do it on the project, and then you're finished, and they go away. So, yes. And in fact, I know that the IT organization has been requesting a staffing plan. They're trying to get this information. I've been kind of hammering on that. I've been hammering on a staffing plan for two months. And so they're moving on that. But they, you know, they need to move a little better, a little faster. I think part of it is there's a tendency for folks to try to be very precise and very particular. And I'm sitting there thinking, you know, an estimate is probably good enough. If I need 10 people, then, okay, two months from now, I can change it and say I need 11. The point is, it's more than zero, right? And so they do need to plan that. And I think they're aware of it. I know HR is starting, in fact, even today, HR is starting to talk about how do we get the resources that we're going to need? And the question continues to always be, well, when exactly are we going to need them? Because we can sit here and talk about these seven rollouts, but we have to recognize that the need for the people precedes the rollout, right? Because they've got to be there for the testing, right? They've got to be there for the training. So it proceeds by several weeks, months in the case of integration testing.
So it's a final point. So it's safe to say in your estimation that the seven rollouts that will occur in September and December, that's where we need to focus on the budget for the backfill? Or where the additional employees?
In two pieces, probably in November, because as I say, it's got to proceed. So it's probably November and December. As long as those dates stay there, you know, whether the first week of December or the second week of December or the third week of December.
And what about the ones in September? That would be more so August?
Same kind of thing, yes. It's got to proceed.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought I heard another question. Ms. Baker.
Thank you. And, you know, much of the concern, I think, has been already talked about. Thank you for putting these rollouts in this form. I think this is really an eye-opener for us to visualize and perhaps the team to visualize in a way that perhaps they're not. But I guess I would echo what I've heard is that the worst-case scenario isn't that it goes into next year and we have to wait longer. I think the worst-case scenario is that we try to meet these deadlines, and we're not successful. So I would rather see caution and take seven rollouts down to three. And maybe the December, which we already know is going to be very limited in staff because of holiday, we know that's going to be an issue, roll that out into next year. I mean, I think the worst-case scenario is that we try to keep this, these rollouts, knowing that they're very, very difficult, and they're the most difficult part of the ERP. To think that we're going to be successful at these two stages gives me high concern. So I would ask that, you know, we really talk about these two things with the team, and that if there is a time where we need to push it off into 19, get into the first quarter where things are a little more quiet. Not only do we have payroll, but we have end of year. We have W2s. We have all the taxes. All of that happens end of December going into January. So these two months, September and December, to me, seem highly unlikely. So I would, I hope they happen that way. But it just doesn't seem to me that we're going into a train wreck here. And the worst-case scenario is trying to meet the deadline and not being successful at it, and then going into next year trying to clean it up.
One of the things that you will see as we go further into this, and one of the things that I will be talking about, is the fact that the master plan doesn't include, doesn't include the county's tasks and the county's schedule and the county's resources. And I strongly believe that it needs to, that the entire project needs to have one consolidated plan so that it can be managed. And only if you do that, you know, will everybody see, well, this is when we need the resources. This is what has to follow this, you know? And you start removing the concept of finger pointing and saying, what's their responsibility? You see that sort of thing? We need to stop, it's not happening, but we need to avoid it happening because it's going to come. I truly believe it's going to come. You've got a vendor who is locked into a fixed-fee contract by deliverable. Last thing in the world that vendor wants to do is, you know, let these things slide away. And from the point of view of the knowledge that's in there, you don't want to, if you call a pause, then you lose the consultants, and the consultants go off somewhere. So all of this is mixed in with this whole issue. A lot of cogs involved here. Okay?
Yes, you may.
There was talk of a dual system.
Say again?
A dual.
A dual system, where we would do it, you know, the old way and the new way at the same time? Is that still in place? And how long, if it is, will we continue those two systems?
I'm not sure. I heard anyone saying that we're going to maintain two systems at one time.
Really?
So, you know, that would be a major deal.
Right. That there would, I heard there was going to be extra people needed because they're going to be doing two systems at one time. And when do you shut it off?
There's no question that there's going to be, you know, the mainframe is going to end up sticking around. There's going to be certainly the need to access existing legacy systems for some of the historical information. But actually, literally entering an invoice over here and entering an invoice over here, I don't think that was going to happen. I mean, I could be wrong. I'm just saying, that's the first I've heard that.
I would ask that you ask that question and come back to us with that answer. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. And Zig, on this rollout chart that's in front of us, am I correct that the cases where there's a light green square and there's a dark green square to the left of it, those are cases where they've actually moved up the timetable?
Yes.
And is there any discussion about trying to move a few of those items in September into August, which has none, to try to spread it out a little bit?
I have not heard of any of that kind of conversation at all. If anything, it's starting to think about pushing things.
Pushing them the other way? Okay, fine. Okay, please proceed.
Okay. So change management is the whole area of getting ready for change, doing the training, doing the communications, and so forth. Just wanted to highlight that there is a scope question that has not been resolved with regard to what INFOR thinks they're supposed to be providing and what the county thinks they're supposed to be providing. And it has to do with training. Okay? And this gets us, this gets us back to this, this business of, you know, are there 20 rollouts or not? Well, there are 20 rollouts, I mean, they're, they're in their plan, there are 20 rollouts. Yet the training says, oh, we'll provide training for global HCM. Well, if you provide training for global HCM, which means that you provide it in time for the open enrollment rollout, and then two months later, you're going to do payroll. Ooh, now what? Where is the training for the payroll? Okay? So you see, there's a, there's a question that needs to be, from a contract administration perspective, that needs to be resolved. Because right now, people are saying, well, I don't know if county's supposed to provide the training resources, or if INFOR is. And INFOR's on a fixed fee, right? It's a negotiating situation as far as I'm concerned. And they need to get resolved, because, again, we're trying to plan the training. Tracking progress, I wanted to show you, I mean, I think I told you earlier, it's important to, to focus on the pace of this project, the pace. How is it moving? And so, again, here's the 20 rollouts, they're, they're listed on the left-hand side, because I think every, I think of everything as targeting my end result. You know? And in fact, you'll notice that the very, the very first two line items on there are project management and change management. As far as I'm concerned, they really should be allocated to the rollouts. Then you, then you're, then you're controlling everything associated with that rollout, which is exactly what you should be doing. Because one of the reasons this training thing happened, and this, this disconnect happened, is because they buried the training in change management, and it wasn't down below with every rollout, which is where it should have been. Okay? So here, the, the, the point of this is to, for you to look at, see, there are three columns there with, with percent completes. There's a February, March, and April percent complete. Okay, now, the April is as of a week, a week ago. Okay? But the thing that's important is to look at this and say, wait a minute. I mean, am I maintaining pace? And by maintaining pace, shouldn't I see an increase in the percent complete on a monthly basis? Well, clearly, we have some examples where that percent complete's hardly moving. Now, a couple of things here. One, if you start changing the target date, it starts affecting your percent complete calculation. Okay? Two, the county deliverables, work order, tasks, et cetera, are not included in the master plan. So these are stated based on the INFOR percent complete. Is INFOR a major component of this whole project? But it is not really accurate. So I, I can only go with what they, what I'm provided. But if this is true, then I would say that if I'm the project director, then I would say, something's not happening. My pace is not good. People are moving meetings to the next week, when they, maybe they should do them this weekend, in order to maintain pace. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So I, again, I just want to remind everybody, overall, it is difficult to measure the percent complete since county efforts and work product are not included in the master plan. Now, it's not, I'm not saying they don't have plans. The teams have plans. It's just that it's not in the master plan. And it ought to be. Now, I've been told that we're going to synchronize our plans. Great. That's something that should take about two hours. I mean, I, I don't understand why it's so hard. Okay, maybe four hours, maybe eight hours. Not three weeks. So INFOR puts out a weekly status report. They do a nice job. But again, my question is, what's the, what's the pace? What's the trend? They put out a report that only has one of these columns. We don't see the fact that, you know, I've, I've basically created four columns here to show you four weeks. This is what the four weeks look like. Now, the blank lines say, well, they haven't started that one yet. The green, everything's in great shape. The yellow says, issues emerging, potential scheduling impacted, but it's being managed. So that's what yellow means. Red, of course, you don't want to see red, right? Katie bar the door if it's red. But you, but the point is, is we're starting to see trends here. Notice that, yeah, we had some glitches with work order management, and so for one week, some issues came up. Okay, but it went right back to green, it's trudging along, fine. Supply chain, fiscal, they've been yellow for the last four weeks. I'm going, okay, that means I've got issues, potential schedule impacts, so it's, and four weeks, and I haven't been able to do anything about them, to change it to green. Okay? So if I were looking at that, I would start asking questions. I would, I, that's what I would be doing. If you look at workforce management, it was in great shape for the first two weeks, and then it changed. So it's important to know that it changed from, from an oversight perspective. The other thing that the team does is they, they talk about arrows, these arrows, which is their, their perception of the trend, how things are moving. Okay? Well, if I see a down arrow for yellow, that would be a concern to me, because that would mean that the trend might make it red in the next week or two. Not a good thing. I have something here with a green arrow going down, pointing down, again. That means that probably in the next few weeks, if I don't do something to maintain pace, I'm going to start having some issues crop up, and all of a sudden, that'll change to yellow. So I think that's, that's what they should be doing. This is from their report, they, they list every week, they say, how are we doing on getting deliverables approved? There's no question that, you know, this is all part of maintaining pace. The deliverables that they provide to the county should be approved by the county in a reasonable time period. The one that caught my eye was executed conference room pilot, that's CRP, for payroll. So in essence, we're kind of trying this product out. Doing, doing the things, Mr. Miller, that you saw for work orders, they did for payroll. Excellent, right? Good thing. Why has it taken 31 days to get that approved, reviewed, and approved? I mean, INFOR wants to get paid, I mean, they, they get a fixed amount for that. It doesn't, it strikes me as strange that it would take that long. And we're talking about a demonstration. You know, identify, identify some things, you know, sure, you're going to identify some things, but it's a demonstration, you're not testing the system. It caught my eye. And they've been struggling with that. I'll, I'll, but I will also tell you that INFOR, three months ago, was screaming about how long it was taking things to get reviewed and approved. And it has improved, it has gotten better. INFOR reports weekly project logs, I put examples in the appendices, it's a lot of detail. Just some highlights for you, that they do, they track significant risks, they track issues, they track decisions, and they track change orders. Those are all good things, that's, they, they should be doing that. Just to, you know, let you know, the, the last one that they did, which was a week ago, five new and overdue risks were reported, eight new and overdue issues were reported, one new decision was reported, and they, and they listed all 12 INFOR change orders. That's it. That's all there have been since the very beginning of the contract. And most of those 12 change orders have been zero-dollar impact. And that's a good thing. But that's part of the reason why it's a fixed fee per deliverable. Okay? That's a good thing. But I would say to you, more are, more change orders are coming, if I'm going to be a prognosticator, and they're going to be asking for more money. That's coming. What?
Pardon? Question?
Do you have a ballpark figure of how much?
Not really, I mean, but, but it, it's, you know, let's, let's, let's give you something to, to, to relate to. The contract, the INFOR contract has $609,000, $609,000, $609,000 set aside, and that is, in essence, a contingency amount that is approved, it's, it's part of the contract. And it's just a matter of the county deciding how to allocate and how to use it for what. Okay? Things like, oh, we, we need to do these three interfaces, we didn't know about them, so you guys need to develop this interface, these interfaces. Okay, well, they've already identified enough for $200,000-some thousand. So they've already used, used that up. Okay, well, they're, and, and the way that the county has decided to do this, which is reasonable, they said, we're going to split that $609,000 between Public Works, Fiscal, and HR. Each, each one, in essence, gets $200,000. Okay? So as soon as they use that up, as soon as they use that up, they're going to need some more. Okay, and now we go beyond the $9.5 million of the contract, and now we start getting into additional contracted value. But those are the kinds of numbers that you'd be talking about. So I wouldn't be surprised at all for a change order that comes out for $250,000 or $500,000. Okay? Now, the last item on here is work stream customization. Work streams are the three we just talked about, Public Works, which is Enterprise Asset Management, Fiscal, and HR. So I'm using the term customization. INFOR doesn't like that term. They don't want anybody to think that they're customizing their software. But the point is, you know, it, it, it keeps us from talking about RICE items, and, you know, and their, their, their acronym is Reports, Interfaces, Change, Workflows, and Enhancements. But that's kind of how they refer to them, so that these different things that need to be developed that are in addition to the core functionality of the software as you get it. Okay? So I call them customizations. They're being tracked, good thing. The most significant out of all of those is Fiscal. Fiscal has already 18 customizations, and Supply Chain has six. That's 24 customizations, and that's starting to get us into that $200,000 number. Okay? Interestingly, the other two don't have any yet. Okay? And I say yet, because.
Yet.
It's going to come. I mean, somebody's going to say, I need a report. It's going to happen. Because I, I still keep asking, is, where are all the reports? You know, and those, those are the things that tend to be overlooked. Just like the master plan should have, the master plan should have the county tax, tasks, the county efforts, the county schedules, so that when we do a percent complete calculation, it covers everything. Okay? Just like that, this weekly report should include county activities. Now, and when I, when I, right now, the county teams, the county teams are meeting independently and individually. All right? And they're, they're addressing some of this stuff. Okay? Can't argue that, but what's missing is the consolidation, the pulling of all that stuff together. Okay? Whether you call that a weekly county-wide project plan, a project report, or, or when you'll see later, I, one of the organizational things I want, I'm going to talk about is there needs to be a project management office. Needs to be a place where you pull all these things together so that me and I can have a consolidated weekly representation of what's going on with the project throughout. And that's missing. Okay? So some observations, did you want to take a pause for questions?
Yes, but I would remind everybody that right now, we're not on pace.
Good, sorry.
Councilman Gallagher.
Just quickly, when, when should that office have been implemented as far as?
The project management office? It actually was originally established, and then it died in January.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Baker?
Same type of question, the project manager is now being sought. So when that project manager comes to be, is that the first thing that you would suggest he do? Is to try and make sure that the county and the INFOR are working together and have a holistic view of how things are?
Absolutely.
That would be his first.
You bet.
So that's a question we would ask him.
You bet. You'd say, do, do you have a consolidated project-wide plan?
Ms. Conwell.
Just quickly, through the chair, Zig, you mentioned four things of customization, I missed one of them, report, workflow, enhancements, and what was the other?
I always, I always get this mixed up. So reports, interfaces, enhancements, and workflows.
Do they need to go in that order?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the W goes first, because they're trying to get it to say RICE.
Thank you.
Councilman Schramm.
Just a comment, it seems to me that when we bring on the project manager, which should have been and is not, wouldn't it make sense to actually create a war room? I've seen war rooms being created around, so that everybody knows, when you go in there, this is a chart, you can see it's on there, it's visually, it's graphic, everybody can see it. It just seems to me that we're, we're to the point where we need to have that kind of mentality, of a war room mentality.
I would agree with that a wholeheartedly, if, if the county were willing to take some of its leadership, its team leadership, and dedicate them full-time to the project. And that becomes the crux, that becomes where you, we, we have an issue.
Council President Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I can see that it's going to take a, a while to wrap our heads around this. But I think it's important that, right here in the beginning, that we do kind of get to some of the fundamentals so that we can follow, I think, all that, that comes after.
I totally agree.
Thank you. This lack, this, I'll call it a lack of urgency, but I don't mean anything in particular about it. But this lack of urgency, I'll call it, the, the pace, as you call it. In your experience, is this a, is this, is this common while local government tries to understand what it's doing? Is this, is this a common thing that occurs?
It, it, it's very common for the pace to struggle due to the, the county, and this, for discussion purposes, due to the county or the municipal government, due to their inability to allocate resources to the project. I mean, and, and, and that's where, when you, when you start time slicing, and you start getting very key people, subject matter experts, and you start time slicing, because you're basically saying, wait a minute, they have a job to do. But, oh, by the way, we want you over here. It becomes very difficult to, to maintain that pace. And so almost every contractor or consultant will recommend to you, we need to have people aligned with our consultants full-time. I mean, they will all say that. It, it is the best way to make it happen. And then you can do the, the war room, you can, you literally move people, you know, so you can get them to focus. Now, that doesn't mean everybody, but in order to do that, then that means you've got to come up with this whole issue of, well, I got to do some backfill, I got to do something because I can't get payroll out unless I have people to do that, because that's going on. Yet you need the payroll expert working on the project, because they know the old system. So, so it is common for that to happen. The thing that I have discovered that can help, okay? The thing that can help to, to maintain pace, to maintain some urgency, is to, is to constantly focus on what can I get done in one week? Manage one week, look at one week, report on one week, because people can see it. People can see Friday, the next Friday.
You can measure it.
And, and, and if you have to, it's harder to get county people to do this, but you can certainly get the consultants and the contractors to do this, and you say, I need that done by Friday. You're not done, you're going to work over the weekend, because I want to see it Monday morning. Okay? And then I can maintain pace. You know, so that helps, okay? But it gets really difficult when your county people are time slicing.
Just as a brief follow-up, Mr. Chairman, in your experience, then, okay, it's, it's common, but I would assume.
but I would assume that what comes next is that the critical part would be, how fast does it get, you know, how quickly can you get up on your feet and be keeping, and be keeping pace? And what has been your, what is your experience in that case? Is that, I mean, that seems to be the thing. You start slow as people are trying to understand what they're doing, but at some point, it shouldn't be that way. It can't be that way for an extended amount of time. It has to eventually get to a place where it is moving at the right speed.
Yeah, a couple of things on that one. Certainly, the project plan, the master plan, the consolidated plan needs to be restructured, and, you know, and everybody needs to kind of focus in on this thing, and they need to break things down into weekly deliverables, weekly work product, weekly actions, weekly results. You know, I mean, like, for instance, I mean, I looked at that master plan, and I keep seeing dates that are in the middle of the week, and I keep thinking, that doesn't make any sense. The target ought to be the end of the week. I mean, somebody isn't paying attention to some of the details of that plan. It should say Friday. Why doesn't it say Friday? It's just like, you know, when am I going to turn on payroll? Am I going to turn on payroll on Wednesday? Am I going to turn on payroll on Monday morning? You know, those kinds of things need to be in the plan. It's common sense that thus isn't happening. The other thing is this whole business of estimating resources. I am well aware of the fact that county resources are a premium. It's hard to get them. They have things to do. I understand that. So when you estimate county resources, the last thing in the world you want to do is estimate something that is not reasonable. Let's talk about what does full-time mean, okay? Most people will immediately say 40 hours a week, clearly. I don't. I use 24 or 32. If I'm estimating full-time equivalence to work on a project, it's going to be 24 hours or 32 hours. It's not going to be, and that's what I call full-time. You put in 10 hours a day, put in eight, put in nine, whatever the case may be, I'm sure not going to sit there and expect you to be gone from your desk Monday through Friday, nine to five. It won't happen. It can't happen. But that, as soon as that happens, it allows you to figure out what your resource needs are, right? And guess what? Slightly more bodies than if I had them all at 40 hours a week. It's exactly what happens, but you're planning it. You know what it is. That make sense?
Yeah.
So it's going to take, it's definitely going to take the team, probably, my guess now would be about a month to kind of get this thing resolved and get it straightened out. I mean, you're waiting for this new, you know, the new project manager, you know, you're waiting for the teams to understand what their tasks are and plan the resources, and like I said, I mean, HR is starting out right now. That's good, okay? But they need to lay it out. I mean, and then they, but everybody's worried about names, and I'm sitting there going, first of all, let's figure out what they have to do and how much time you need, then put names to it, you know? It's kind of like the sequence of how do you do planning and scheduling? So it probably will take a month. Should you expect the team in their May report to have that pretty well put to bed? I would say yes. I would say yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Tuma is next, followed by Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you coming out here this morning, and it's very enlightening. So, you know, to try to put this in some type of perspective, okay? Today, we have the draft occurring, right? And we have these people, and Mr. Schran mentioned war rooms, we have people with plans, but it seems like we have no general manager here. So who, the project manager not in place, so who's to direct these folks that, you know, this is what you need to do moving forward? I mean, it seems like you have a plan, but I don't know that they have a plan.
Well, you now get into, you now get into the, sort of the overall governance structure and where things started, and where they have moved, and where they maybe hopefully need to go. You had a technology flavor for this project in the beginning. In the very beginning, it was a technology project, okay? It was not a business project. It was not run by the business, it was run by technology. And that's okay when you have a smaller, more direct, more controlled situation. When you start talking about enterprise-wide, it's a problem, because the technology folks tend to solve things, they tend to take a technology hammer, you know, to something, to a thumbtack, all right? I mean, that's just, that's what they do, okay? So that's where it started. Now, you lost that leadership in January, all right? We all know what that was all about. So then you had some solid IT professionals step in on an interim basis, okay? They stepped in on an interim basis to fill that void, you know, and they didn't have all the details, they didn't know what was going on, you know, they, this whole thing had been going on for a year, and they stepped in. And they stepped into kind of a quagmire, right? But now you've got, you've still got the business side of the house not trusting the technology side of the house, you're getting into the personalities, you're getting into those kind of differences, so you still have technology flavor, all right? So you've still got a technology flavor. And...
I can't hear you.
Me?
What are you saying?
The, yes, Mr. Brady's mic was on.
Shall I continue? So you've got this technology flavor, and so they, that is, and there's this mistrust, and so now their view and their approach has been one of asking for support and input from the business side of the house, as opposed to leading, guiding, directing, I mean, you know, they don't have control, you know, of the business side of the house, so they're asking. So they're saying, "Do we need a staffing plan? Sure." Well, but, you know, you're not going to see the current interim leadership, they're not going to put their fist on the table and say, "I want it next week, you know, this is the format I want." Got to have it. Don't give me pushing it down the road stuff. So that's what's happening. So that's why I keep saying, yeah, you need, my preference without a doubt is that you should have one single leader, okay? The county may come up with some compromises and some adjustments to that thinking, but the point is, and it needs to be a contractor, and it should not report to IT, should report to the business side of the house, okay? And I specifically think that the contract, the new contract project manager, the contract administrator who signs the bills should not be IT, should be business, okay? That's...
Sheta.
I don't know. I can't say that any stronger.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Baker.
I know we're low on time. I just want to go back to the first slide you had of the scope of work and the training piece. We were told earlier, before probably you got here, that the qualified workforce is an issue. It's an issue whether it's internal, and those that are used to doing things the way they used to do them have the ability to be able to enhance their work skills and get up to speed. And we were also told that outside of our environment here, hiring outside of that is also difficult because we can't offer as much, or all kinds of different reasons why hiring a qualified workforce could slow us down, if not stop us, because we don't have the people in place. Is, did you find that at all? I know that you mentioned about preparation and who's going to do it, but actually, the people themselves, is that going to be a problem?
There's no question that it becomes more difficult to hire technology people, right? Because there is a, there is an expectation that technology people have specific skills, okay? So it's difficult to find them, and then once you find them, then it becomes a question of can you pay for them? Technology folks have a great opinion of themselves, and so database administrators, you know, ask for a lot of money, more than the management, typical, okay? So that's an issue. In terms of getting a project completed, which is going to last one, two, three years or whatever, there's nothing wrong with using contractors, nothing wrong with using contractors. You know, I mean, there's, again, we're back to technology folks want to, they're going to solve this thing with a hammer, right? I mean, they're going to hit that tack as hard as they can. Well, they're trying to hire people for the duration, they're trying to hire people for three years from now. And you'll see there's, you know, one of the things I talk about is that they're trying to hire this support team, and I'm sitting there going, wait a minute, get the project done. And, you know, if it's hard to find support people to be hired, use contractors. That gives you time to go do the search and spend six months trying to get somebody on board as an employee. Am I answering your question?
You are, and I haven't heard it answered like that before. The contractors that you're talking about, though, is that within the budget that we have allocated? Are we, you know, I know tech people, as you said, are difficult to find and very expensive, so is the temporary contractor to get this project up and running giving us time to find perhaps the right people? I understand that, but how does that put our budget in place?
I think that, I think that the organization, I mean, and the team has heard this, and they understand, and I think on the whole, they agree with where I'm coming from, but the original budget and the way it was put together a year ago included an awful lot of costs that are operating costs.
Right.
Those aren't part of the project. You can't capitalize operating cost. So that needs to be basically segregated, and, you know, IT needs to come to you with their budget adjustments for 2019 or 2020, and they need to say, "Our operating costs are going up for this reason," whatever the case may be. But the net effect of that is that it leaves, I think, a number is closer to $4.5 million, it leaves that much between what's been contracted and what everybody's working on and where they're spending their money and the $25 million authorization. That pays for a lot of contract developers.
The ultimate goal, though, is that we are trying to be more efficient, we're trying to have the return on investment, and at the end of the day, we will see savings. So, you know, that seems like a pretty tough hill to climb, but that's where we want to be at the end of three years, when perhaps the contractors go away and we put people in place, but we find that we need fewer people, maybe higher quality for the skills that they have, but overall, it's going to be less and more efficient, and we get more work done.
Should be.
Okay.
You bet.
Okay, well, it's clear that we're not going to finish this undertaking today, and that's okay. I don't know of anything more important than that the county is doing right now, and we need to take as much time as it takes to get through this, but council members have schedules and other things that they have booked, so we're going to operate within our usual timeframe, which means that we're going to, we're going to end around noon, and we're going to then set up another time to complete it. So please proceed.
Okay, the comments I have earlier talked about, everything that's on page 23, you know, just reminding everybody, the lines of management I consider to be very fuzzy, they need to be clarified, mainly at the team level, mainly at the team level. It's hard to say who's responsible for the team. So that concerns me. I do think that the executive steering committee, if you establish that project management office, the executive steering committee doesn't have to meet weekly, because in essence, they're operating as a project management office right now, and clearly, at their level, they're not involved with the details, nor should they be, okay? On project management, this was the original INFOR request. They basically said, "Look, every team should be led by a county person, and that person should team up and be paired with an INFOR consultant." That's not very effectively happening right now, and it should be, okay? I've already said, and I'm on page 25, I've already said that the master plan does not reflect county deliverables. I think it should. You know, we need to have one master consolidated plan. In fact, those teams have got their own spreadsheets. I mean, none of that's related. I mean, they're not connected, they're not consolidated, and they should. Critical path elements should be in the project plan, and they are not. The example, the example that I would use specifically is the Harris project. I mean, one of the most crucial pieces of information that the new financial system needs to have is your revenue. The Harris system has to pass that to the new system, therefore, there has to be an interface. Now, is the interface and the work associated with the interface in the plan? Yes, it is. What's not in the plan is the target data when Harris goes live, because it's useless to know, to have this interface and not, isn't connected to anything. I mean, you have to wait for that Harris system to work. I don't know what the timing on that is, but it should be in the plan as a critical We've talked about the county staffing in terms of backfill, so that's basically what we're saying here. I mean, it just amazes me that we've got a budget for it, but we don't want to, don't seem to want to use it. And my last comment there, you know, the April report, they really should have some components of that staffing plan, they really ought to be able to tell you that this is when we need resources, and this is how much we need, and so forth, and what they're going to work on. Should be there. I think I've talked about this business of the peers working together. I do think it's interesting that you have expense management, contract management, and learning management, these are all work streams that are starting soon. We don't know who's going to be on them yet. We don't know. INFOR doesn't even know who their expense management person is going to be. Project spending, this was included in the last month's report, just wanted to highlight for you that the team should be tracking and paying attention to their, to their planned spend on a monthly basis. I tend to look at it this way, because I like graphs, but it is a reminder to let everybody know there's a big chunk coming in November, and that's $1.5 million to pay for the software. But the question of that $1.5 million is what portion of it is operating, what portion of it is capital, okay? Right now, it's all assumed to be capital. And it just needs to be reflected, because the other thing, and some changes need to occur, because I used the information from last month's report, and that only ran the numbers out to the end of 2018. Now we've got at least several pieces that are now in 2019. Just a reminder of where the money is being spent, clearly, and this is an indication of the complexity of what's going on. The most complex piece out of all of this, from the point of view of number of resources needed, the number of programs, is Fiscal. Clearly, it is. You know, and that's 19% of the total INFOR spend, using that as the indicator, okay? Now, I'm back to, I'm back to maintaining, tracking project pace. Another way of tracking project pace is to track what your planned spend is and what your actual spend is, okay? Now, a lot, this is important in the sense... Now, a lot, this is important in the sense, in the sense that, remember, the bulk of the spend is tied to INFOR's fixed fee per deliverable. So this is the plan of when they're going to be issuing invoices. Okay? And, and, but you know, but the other thing that we've got to include in the spend is, you know, something is software. So that software thing is sitting out here and it hits you in, in November. But notice what, how we're tracking. The blue line says we're tracking below the planned spend, which means that we're not achieving those deliverables. We're certainly not paying for them, let's put it that way. So it's, so it, it's again, an indicator so that you can see the trend. If that blue stays below those lines, below that orange line, this project's going to continue to fall behind. And ultimately, things get pushed into 2019.
Okay, we'll check and see if there's questions. Any questions? No? Continue on.
There, there's a reason why I chose this picture on page, on page 32. The captain of the ship, there should be one boss. But with regard to governance. So, so the transition of what's going on, I think it's excellent that, you know, we've got some things moving in the executive steering committee. And I think I've mentioned that county executive has asked the chief of staff to be actively involved and he is. I've had several meetings with him already. But there are some folks that are not represented on the executive steering committee and I think they should be, specifically HHS. And I'm looking at this not from the persp, the, the, the key members of the executive steering committee are the people who are providing resources to the project. Public works, HR, fiscal. Those are the key players. They're the, they're, they're the key players that are on the executive steering committee. Yes, IT is represented, the projects represented, and INFOR is represented and so forth. But one of the key users of this system in the future, as we go down the road, is HHS. I mean, who's got a very large portion of the employees? Ergo, I'm back to, you know, who's really getting paychecks and who should be paying attention to what's happening to the payroll rollout? I mean, they should know. Same thing with open enrollment. So that's why I'm suggesting that some key, other additional players should be added to the executive steering committee so that they are tuned in to what's going on.
A question, a question about the executive steering committee. We have, we have two leaders. We, we have Matt Carroll and we have Dennis Kennedy and now we have, have the chief of staff, which in some way could be a third leader. And my, my question is whether you have a problem with that? Whether you feel that there should be a single person who's the leader of the executive steering committee?
I, I will answer it with this image.
Okay.
One guy at the wheel.
Okay.
Shall I go on?
Yes, please.
So I want to talk a little bit about the project organization and, and I, and I'm making sure, I want to make sure we all understand that I'm talking about the ERP project organization and I'll explain where I'm coming from. The chart you see in front of you came from July of 2017. This was the original intent of how the project should be structured. Okay? So if you look at this carefully, you see, oh, there's a project management office. All right. Interesting. The other thing you'll notice is there's a purchasing team, which I think should, is important, that there be a separate purchasing team. It was there. So I'm saying the initial intentions were good. Okay? So what has happened is that it has morphed, it has changed, the project management office went away. You know, because it was difficult to get county resources, all of a sudden, there became just one fiscal team, one group of people meeting weekly and all of a sudden, purchasing got short shrift. Budget got short shrift. Okay? And then, and, and then the HR team, we've got both HR and payroll in that, in that meeting, so the meeting is split in half. I've sat in those meetings. Half the meeting is on HR issues, the other half is on payroll. Two different rollouts, exactly. So should there be two different groups? I think so. Okay? So then, then this is the chart that you got on Monday. Okay, this is the chart that you got on Monday. Now, I think what's important to recognize is it says it's the ERP support organization. This is not, this is not the ERP project organization chart. Okay? And I think it's important to recognize that. This is the structure that IT wants to have once the system is running. So let's take a look at that original 2017 chart. Some adjustments can be made. What I have done is I, you'll notice that I have kind of put that contract project director in there that I think you ought to have. Okay? I have circled the administrative support for the project director. Right now, I think there's four, maybe five different administrative support individuals doing the work of the ERP project. Scheduling meetings, updating project plans, organizing, taking minutes, all that kind of stuff. Well, it would make a lot of sense that there are just one person doing that and that one person would be reporting and responsible directly to that contract project director. Notice that I've shown INFOR in here, they should be there. There's no question that they should be there. Okay? On the other side, where, where, where the project administrative support is, probably need to add the box for RSM McGladrey. Okay, they're, they're now a player and they're, they should be on here. Notice that there's, the, the original intent was to have this group of technology support. Of course, they should be there. But my point is that's the foundation for the future ERP support group. That's not the team that's responsible for implementing the, the system. And then I've circled payroll. Notice that the original plan was to group them all together and the reason for that is that INFOR classifies those two together in their GHRC system. And that's what they call their module or their subsystem. They include payroll. I, I think it's separated because they've got a separate rollout. Okay? You notice I've got a green box to the left. Counties run by the budget. Way the counties run. Seems to me like it ought to get its own group, have its own flavor, it ought to have its, and, and all of these then across the bottom come into the project management office and I've added that blue box there. They come in there and that group meets weekly. And each team leader then is responsible for talking about their progress and their status and their open issues across all the other, you know, for themselves as well as information between the teams. That's where that happens. And the result of that is a weekly summary progress report that goes to the ESC. I want to talk quickly about expectations for benefits. We talked about this a little earlier and I wanted to set the stage. What do you think of my fish? This is a chart that, that I used quite a bit a few years ago when I was with Deloitte and Touche. I think it's still valid. And it's based, it's based on a Deloitte and Touche survey. So we've got some survey information in essence from a while ago, but it's still, I think it's very valid. The question becomes, you know, when you put in a system like an ERP system, when do you start getting results? When do you start seeing benefits? When do you start seeing performance improvement? Okay? Your question, right? And what, what was discovered in this survey is that when you turn that system on initially, again, let's, let's assume that it's, it's, it's a situation where you are replacing an existing system. Work orders and EAM and, and, and right now, what you have going on, they've got little or nothing, so again, they're going to see stuff right relatively quickly. But the, the point A on this, on this line says, the baseline is up above and says, this is your current performance, this is what you're doing. You turn that system on, things slow down initially. Things slow down initially. So it's a drop in performance due to the learning curve effect, usually about two to three months. And this is a big deal when you start talking about ERP because you're talking about, except for public works, it's everything. Payroll, HR, fiscal, all that stuff. Okay? Then you get to this, all right, fine. You go through the learning curve, you get people making phone calls, you know, help desk, and things are happening, they don't know what to do. And then finally, you have to spend some time just kind of stabilizing. Everybody just kind of, oh, we're using it now and we're getting used to it. And that stabilization period can last as long as six months. But you'll notice that what's happening here is that you, you have the drop off of your baseline, what you used to do. And when you stabilize, you're actually operating at below that level. So then you need to come back up. So point C says, okay, now we're going to, you know, in another, next four months, we'll, now we'll start having improvements and we'll come back up. But we're really only getting back to the baseline and only after we've gotten to the baseline do we start seeing the, oh, now I've got net benefits. And that's, based on that survey, is what I'm saying you probably should expect. So if you start thinking about this and you say, let's just, for discussion purposes, say I turned the system on at the end of December, 2018, it's going to be a good, solid year before you start seeing anything. Other than public works. Again, I, I think they're going to start showing something because they started with nothing. Makes sense? So just on a timeline basis then, to get into some practicality, these are some ideas of what you probably are going to see. So, you know, the, the implementations projects go from one to two years. ERP projects. The stabilization's about six months. Now you get embedded, people start really using things, okay? And that's about 12 months. Then you start really saying, okay, let's start doing great new things. That's the transform. All right? So your benefits, you know, what I'm suggesting to you is your benefits really aren't going to start till you hit the 12-month timeline. And then following that is when you, you start, you start seeing a hockey stick in improvement.
Okay. Questions?
I'll have to the chair, just wanted to be clear, Zig. So in the implementation stage, that's where all the testing should be completed in that phase?
Yes.
And we're not doing it like that, are we? Are we, is our plan going according to this schedule?
Well, there's, the plan, right now, the master plan addresses this implement box. There's nothing for the post-go-live. I mean, you, that, that still needs to be addressed. IT team is trying to build an ERP support group to help make that happen. But I've got a white paper that I probably should get out to you, which is all about, what do you do after go-live? And it's all about, oh, I have to have people involved with this group other than IT. I've got to go beyond IT. I can't just have IT. I got to have people who are part of the business, part of the operation. So that's another topic, but that should be planned out absolutely.
So you just said a powerful statement. So what happens after go-live? So the go-live, I guess our concern would be, we have money to, in this total project that is going to address after go-live?
I don't think so.
Okay. Council president.
Were you, I hate to get, just by this way it works. Are you, were you implying or insinuating some time ago that we, maybe the county should consider redirecting some of its, the resources that we have already, that we have allocated in a different way than what they've been playing, how they've been planned and to, to make it maybe easier to understand what I'm trying to say. When you were talking about contractors, were, were you, were you saying that it's, that we maybe should be using some of our resources to hire contractors instead of, instead of, of the approach that we're taking now? Or did I miss the point?
No, I, I think, I think that there is an, a general plan to, to use contractors as necessary. I think there's an expectation that, that the team's going to do that. They just simply are dragging their feet in terms of, in terms of going down that path.
What are the consequences of, of this taking much longer than we expect? Obviously, we want to do it right, but, you know, what are, what are, you know, what are, what are we, what are the consequences of this taking a year or two longer than, or what the, whatever the amount of time would be? I just made that up.
You'll see in my conclusions that, you know, I think we're, we're getting close to the tipping point. Within the next few months, with regard to the project, its abilities to meet the schedules, its abilities to meet the staffing needs, you know, so should, should the team, you know, get this resolved and say, what do we need? When do we need them? You know, let's get the people in here and go and move forward. Yeah, they're, they're, they're getting close to that sort of tipping point, which says, uh, we don't have enough time now. You know, and that's going to, that's going to happen.
So what are the consequences of us not, not keeping up?
They're going to push the project.
And what are the consequences of pushing the project other than it not getting done as soon as you hope?
The, the problem with, with pushing the project is, is that you probably, you probably end up going into a pause with the contract with INFOR. Probably will lose a bulk of the, of the contractors, the consultants that are part of their team. So you'll be faced with a ramp-up time after the pause. So if you pause for three months, it could take you as much as two to three months to ramp up, to get, to, to get your knowledge back that you need from the consultants because they'll be off of doing something else. You know, this specific example, my prior client, that's exactly what happened. I mean, they, they called a pause and they thought that calling a pause was going to be just three months. And I said, I don't think so. And it ended up being six. So it literally cost them a half a year, once they called the pause. And so could, you know, would it be exactly the same here? I, I don't know if I can say that, but I, I would certainly say that there, if you call a pause, then there's going to be a ramp-up time beyond that and that, that's a cost. I mean, that is a cost in addition to being a scheduled issue. And there's no question that INFOR will request a change order, you know, for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel McGalaght, Dan Baker.
All of us not being experts in this area and probably undereducated, but hearing you today, this really isn't rocket science. If structured properly from the beginning, and it seems like if we went back 17, it was properly structured and somehow that became what it is today. To avoid a shutdown ramp-up, would it be reasonable if, if your conclusions are taken to heart by the administration and the team are implemented? Is this shutdown ramp-up avoidable in your opinion? And what might be that timeline that we're looking at for, for a decision to move this forward in the way in which you've structured this?
You bet. I don't think there's any question that, that some of the common sense, practical things that, that I've been discussing, because that's what they are. Okay? If they are applied, then, then there's no, no reason why the project can't move, can't start moving forward and, and can't start maintaining a pace that'll actually get them to their end result. I mean, but it, it's, it's hard to get people to understand that you got to start now on some things rather than wait until that deadline date. I mean, that, I mean, that's a human nature thing. You know, and that's why you, you need that leadership, you need that, you know, contract project manager who's an expert or who's, you know, who's a good, doesn't have to be a good technical person, he needs to be a good people person. You know, and these, these things are all about people. You know, so, so yeah, I, I think if, if some of these very reasonable, practical approaches were applied, it would certainly enhance the opportunity for this project to follow and meet those schedules. I mean, it's, it's not impossible. They're not in that much trouble. They're not in that much trouble. They're not in trouble. EAM is rolling along great. It's, you know, they, they should have a flag carrier, you know, they should be out there waving that flag. Of course they should. You know, but we got, we got to get some of the rest of them to kind of get on the same bandwagon. Okay? This holy fuzzy leadership thing, I mean, you know, clearly, you know, EAM seems to be doing just fine. You know, what can I say?
Ms. Baker.
Thank you. And, you know, that question is certainly what's in front of us, and more important, I think, than this question right now. But it's only because you brought it to us, achieving the ERP benefits, before we leave that page. Once we get to the transformation of one to two years, things like focus on new and additional services, focus on customer service, develop new channels to market, those are all good and progressive things. But I don't see in here the money savings. What can we expect when we begin to transform? What, you know, even if it's a percentage, we had one of our directors tell us that we can expect a 20% efficiency in what we now are doing because of the implementation in public works. So I guess I would ask the same question, if you can even answer it, that now that you're giving us an ERP benefit, besides the, the outline that you gave us of, of better services, what can we also expect if you can give us that in a percentage of savings?
You know, I, I, I really would, would have difficulty with that. It should come, it should come from your, the administration. It should come from the people who are there, because they're going, the ones that are going to have to make it happen. You know, I, I think they know, and they have discussed the various categories of benefits. I think they know what those are. I think they are certainly very reluctant to talk about RIFs. Okay? Because they know it's public, and they know, they know it's, you know, it's going to create all kinds of consternation in terms of your employee base. And most people don't want to talk about that, and, and so they're trying to get ways that you can represent the, the result without going down that path. And clearly, you know, the, the retirement approach is, is followed by many. And there's no reason why you can't either. You know, I mean, I don't know what the numbers are in terms of how many people, you know, are faced with retirement over the next three years. I, I have no idea. And whether or not you're going to replace them, I, I don't, I don't know. But it's certainly a possibility. You know, I mean, certainly there are, you know, there are going to be, and, and of course, I tend to use the word effective as opposed to efficient. They're not quite the same. And I do think that there's going to be a tremendous number of ways that the organization will become more effective. Okay? And in so doing, there, you know, you will accrue benefits. And there's going to be a long li, there should be a long list of various ways that the new system will allow this organization to be more effective. Review, reviewing invoices manually. You know, is that necessary? My understanding is that we've got people who are reviewing invoices manually. I mean, they're, they're scanning them. Is that necessary? I would bet that with a new system, it's not. Strikes me, that's a benefit. Now, how you address it, you know, that's another issue entirely. And I, I'm, I'm not in love with that. But that's an example. The, the whole idea of, well, gee, we, we, we have these filing cabinets full of paper. You know, their invoices and their purchase orders and all that kind of thing. Well, theoretically, that goes away. So not only does the cost associated with storing paper become a benefit, so does the handling time. See what I'm saying? So I, I think they all can do that. I, I, I really do. I mean, they've gone through, they've, they've gone through the as-is, this is the way it used to be, and those are all eight and a half by 11 sheets of paper, and there's a drawing, and it says, here's what, here's what we used to do. And then they say, here's what we're going to do. So everybody, those exist. They're out there, I've seen them. Well, there's a gap between, here's what we used to do, and here's what we're going to do. Right? Well, and that gap represents a change, it represents a difference. I mean, it, there, there may be, you know, my approach is a little different. I have a tendency to draw X's through boxes. This is not needed anymore. You know, I don't, I don't know how the gaps were identified, but they're there. Every gap represents a potential improvement, and a potential improvement represents a benefit.
Okay. Well, thank you. And we now come to, to where we're going to take a pause. And, and my, my plan, if it's amenable to the, to the group, is, is that I, that, that we would adjourn the meeting. I don't know that we can set the time for, for the next meeting on the fly. And, and, and I think at the next meeting, we'll go over the, the conclusions and, and, and talk about, about these implications and what it all means. And also, by the time of the next report, we should have the April report from, from Infor. So, so we could do both, we could, we could talk about these conclusions and also look into the question of what more have we learned from receiving that April report? Does, does that make sense to everybody? Okay, well, then, with that, is there any miscellaneous business? Hearing none, there being no further business that holds our attention. Thanks, everybody, for your time and attention, and we are adjourned.